Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, February twenty first, two thousand twenty-three, at six P. M. Just want to make a couple announcements. We just want to give our condolences to the Johnson family, passing of our honorary Levi, honorary police officer, passed away just recently. And also, I've got a couple Bellevue East seniors, well, one's a senior. And Caden and Zach, just visiting for one of their projects, sitting in the front row there. So, thanks for joining us. Pardon me? Yes, behave, Kathy. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand for that, followed by the invocation. Reverend Daryl Keeney, Lighthouse Baptist Church, is with us, and he also has a little tribute, too, I think, for Levi. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hike has given me permission to tell a quick story. My wife teaches at the same school Levi attended, and one of the things they do every year is a combined third grade class, or make these race cars out of little blocks of wood, and then they race them. And so, they also have a design contest as part of that, so you want to keep the design secret, not to influence any votes. But I popped my head in, class Levi was in, and I said, way to go, third grade. And Levi popped, said, mine's the police car. And after I heard more of his story, I'm like, what else would he design, right? What else would he make? So, I just thought you would appreciate hearing that. He loved what you guys did for him, and it's a positive reflection on our community. So, let's go to the Lord in prayer. So, Father, thank you for just the love and community aspect of this Bellevue community, of concern for a little guy who had a hard life and made his days brighter. So, thank you for that. Lord, I pray your wisdom for this meeting tonight, that you give insight and judgment and guidance in the decisions before them. Lord, I just thank you for these people that are willing to serve in all levels of administration. God, you've asked us to pray for those in authority, and so pray that we would do so often, and that we would see you do a great and mighty work in our city. And we thank you for what you are doing, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Reverend Keeney. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw. Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of an agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports, five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion, and I want to make an amendment. I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Councilman Cook.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda, agenda to remove item sixteen G, per the Public Works Department staff. It's a recommendation from them. It is no longer needed.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns, to remove sixteen G. Let's vote on the amendment. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent, oh, sorry, we said a motion by Cook, second by Welch, to approve the agenda. Now is amended. Any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
Councilman Preister, is yours gone through?
I tried twice, all refresh.
There it comes. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is, unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Some Burns?
Yep, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have none this evening. Item eight, organizational matters. We have none. Item nine, approved citizen communications. We did receive one. Nine A, Kyle Roan, topic for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, fellow citizens, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to address the council. Chief Clary.
Mr. Roan, would you just say your name, and, sorry, I forgot the instructions. Say your name and address and sign in.
Kyle, I live, I live in Old Town Bellevue. Does this count toward my five minutes?
We'll start the clock after you sign in.
I am telling you, I'm a little nervous tonight. Y'all seen me speak before, and I'm not nervous, but I am, because I got high school seniors in here, and I'm hoping that I do a good job, so it's a good example for them. All right, I'm signed in. Ready?
Yeah.
Chief, what I was going to say is, this is not about police vehicles. As a citizen and someone who is concerned about security in, in the city, I want police officers to have the best motor vehicles we can give them, and I want them to have the best body armor that we can buy. That's, I want that. My concern tonight is over active citizenship and transparency. So, as I read through last, last meeting's minutes, I saw that we've approved seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, almost seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of police vehicles. That was a non-budgeted item. I have concerns about that. Police vehicles are necessary, and I know we're going to talk about security if there's a rebuttal here, but also, strong budgeting is just as important to our city's security as is for those, for those vehicles and that body armor. I would say the same thing about our fire department. If they needed new vehicles, or if they need a new turnout gear, or they need new fire hose or rescue gear, we want them to have the best, but we have to have strong, transparent budgeting processes. So, what my concern is, is that we're spending three quarters of a million dollars this year that was not budgeted in last year's budget. And when I talked to the state auditor, they said, we're not planning on amending our budget. So, I have a concern about that. As I read the Nebraska Budget Act, and it's thirteen dash five oh two, five oh five, five ten, and five eleven, when I read those, and I'm not an attorney, so, and you're probably going to tell me where I'm wrong in my reading, but it says that that's not right. That that should be transparent to all of our citizens, that that budget should be transparent, and that if it's, if we have an issue that pops up, that we're transparent in how we're fixing that issue. And I understand about state contracts, and we can get a better deal. But my question is, why didn't we budget that? Because one of the documents in last week's, or last meeting's minutes, was a purchase order that was signed in September, and this current year budget wasn't approved until October. And there was nothing, as a citizen, that I was aware of, that we were going to spend that, spend that amount of money. The other thing was that we just passed, I guess, a lot of public discourse, I would say, a budget that included eight point six six percent increase in property taxes. And there was a lot of discourse with that. The public didn't really like that at every meeting I went to. So, where's the surplus? Because we came here on a Friday afternoon at four o'clock to approve that budget, and there were two people here. So, we came in early, so people that weren't, really couldn't be here. And I'm just kind of wondering where that surplus is, because budgets were tight. That's what we were told. That's why we needed that eight point six six. And now, we can spend almost three quarters of a million dollars. And it just popped up on those minutes. So, anyway, I'm just asking for transparency. I'm asking that the city ask the state auditor to come in and audit that and publish those results from that audit, just to make sure that we're doing it right. And I appreciate the time. How many minutes did I do, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you did good.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Cook.
Kyle, I'll just, I'll just, I want to make a comment to you. I'm not challenging. We got, we have a budget task force we put together every year, and we go through that budget pretty detailed with staff. There's three council members on it. So, we do spend a lot of time and effort in our budgets every year. There are obviously some things that we can't predict. We don't know. I mean, we could have something tomorrow, a major storm or something, and throws everything apart. You talk about something in September, and then we did budget till October. There has been times where we have split costs of things. I can think of one, maybe like a splash pad where we paid for half of it in one budget year, and we pushed the other half in the second budget year. I know you're, you made a comment about pass, we passed eight point six six property tax increase. We didn't, we only have control of the levy. Where, what people see, and that levy probably hasn't been changed for probably eight years, I think, I think what you're referring to, and everybody has a concern. I got a concern, as a citizen, too, but what happens is our value of our homes go up, and that's all done by the, out at Sarpy County. The city of Bellevue has nothing to do with that. So, we didn't change our levy. That increase that people are seeing is because the assessor, the Sarpy County assessor, is pretty aggressive, made those bumps, and so, everybody probably, if, if your value, your house went up, you're paying a little bit more tax, not only to the city, but to the schools and everybody else listed under your value. And I, and I, and also, there is also an audit committee that I'm on, and two other council members, and we're going through an audit right now. So, we, they work with the finance people. They're going through the audit. The audit committee will meet a few times, and then we come back and we make a report. They'll come back with a report and tell us the condition of our city. And I will tell you, the last several years, the financial status condition of the city has been fairly good. It's been good and stuff. So, I feel confident we're doing the right thing, for the right reason. I don't, I think it was all transparent. We, we were, we were confronted with something. We had to make a decision. It's, it's, it's done here. It's not done behind closed doors. So, I think we've been very transparent, very honest, and very sincere of the information that we put out and the information that we vote on. Is that fair?
I don't know if I have time to rebut that, but.
Well.
Come up to the mic. I'll give you, I'll give you a minute. You saved a minute, so.
That's okay. Thank you. So, the eight point six six was, we didn't have to take that much to the city. The way I understand the laws, if we didn't meet that threshold of three point two five, I think, I may be off a few digits there, we didn't have to have a public hearing, and that's what we would, that's what we would get. I mean, we don't really have to ask for that. That would come in because of the, the values rise. Anything above that threshold required the city to have a public hearing, which there were three. There was one over in Omaha that included this county, because Metro Community College is there. Then there was one at Sarpy County.
Right.
And then there was one here, and this was the one that was at four o'clock. So, yes, I kind of agree with you there, but I think that there was, you know, we asked for more than what that threshold allowed, which required us to have a public hearing. The other thing I would say is that if that, I know you have all those meetings, but I can't be a citizen and come to every single one of those. It's just impossible to that. But we were definitely here for the budget discussions, and nowhere in there were their vehicles in that budget. And you could have had a split. You could have said, hey, you know, these vehicles may come in, but they may not, and if they don't, we're just going to take this bunch of money, and we're going to put it off to next fiscal year.
I agree with you, but in this case, we were given a ten day window of, of, if we wanted to buy some cruisers, and we thought that we had, we, now, probably not going to say this right. There's probably people in this room that could speak better to it, but I think there was a period where we didn't get vehicles that we had budgeted for. We didn't get them. Then we didn't budget them, and boom, right? When we start the budget, we're presented, do you want vehicles? So, we had to make a decision, but it was very transparent. And, and you're right. I, I wasn't thinking about the meeting over in Papillion South. I attended that when you were referring to eight six six. I was just thinking that you saw a bump overall that the county, or this, for the city, the bump was eight point six six. So, I, I probably didn't really speak correctly to what you were trying to get to. But I will tell you, from year to year to year, things go up, because all of our employees are getting pay raises generally, just like every homeowner. Our, our gas for our vehicles costs more and everything, too, so we're more than likely going to see an increase from year to year to year. But I understand your concerns, but I will tell you, I've been on the budget, our budget committee since we created it here, and I will tell you that we got things in play that we are watching everything, as everything goes through this process, and I feel confident to say that we're very transparent, and we're not in violation of the law.
Thank you.
You bet.
This was excellent discourse, so I hope you all learned something.
Well, thank you for taking time and coming up here and talking to us.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Roan. All right, that takes us to item ten, liquor licenses. We have no applications this evening. Eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, there are none. Twelve, ordinances for public hearings, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four one one five, and ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of one parcel of city property to Jeffrey Nazic and to authorize the mayor to sign. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one five, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of one parcel, city property, to Jeffrey Nazic, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open the public hearing for item twelve A. If there's anyone here that wants to speak regarding that, please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And third reading will be March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at six P. M. Item twelve A, ordinance number four one one six, request to rezone lots one and two, Compass Hill, being a replat of tax lot eight A, located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-two, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P. M., Sarpy County, Nebraska, from A. G. to R. D. sixty, for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Habitat for Humanity of Sarpy County, general location eight twenty West Avery Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one six, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by article three of ordinance number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about eight twenty West Avery Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I'll open the public hearing for twelve B. If there's anyone in the public that would like to talk about twelve B, please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in, please.
Good evening. My name is Ken Mar. I'm the area director for Habitat for Humanity, seventeen oh one North Twenty-Fourth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So, your brother, I think, is an NFL referee. I have some questions on that.
Is this the right forum?
No. Anybody else that would like to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward. Does council have any questions for Kevin? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Was your first name Ken?
Yep.
I'm sorry. I wasn't sure. Ken, I don't know if you've seen, we've got a couple letters. Maybe they are addressed at the planning commission. Are you aware of a couple letters that we got from citizens?
I am not, but, yeah.
Maybe Tammy could help. One talks about, one letter talks about Tenth Street. I know someone says they don't want it to run through. Someone else says they do want it to run through. They're concerned if it was a straight street, that kids from Bellevue West would come flying through. Tammy, is, do we know how that road's going to be built?
Here's kind of the situation. Mr. Mar, one of them was from the Unsteads, just concerned with street layout. The other one was from the Ferreras, Ferreras. I may not be saying that right. Again, concerns with the ultimate street layout. So, for this particular application, we are not dealing with the larger property that Habitat owns. Habitat owns this property here. Ultimately, the property that is being subdivided tonight, and the rezoning is just tax lot eight A to the south. The whole purpose for doing so is that Habitat can split off the property they are going to purchase from the current owners. There would be a lot left for the existing single-family residents, and then the remaining lot would go to Habitat. So, at this time, there is no preliminary plat in front of the city council, and I think it's probably premature to discuss any street layout, because we don't have a preliminary plat at this time. So, really, all we have is a small subdivision plat. Again, lot, proposed lot one would be for the existing single-family residents. Proposed lot two would remain vacant for the near future, and maybe Mr. Mar can speak more to that. But again, it's, it's solely to facilitate the purchase of proposed lot two for Habitat. So, there's no proposed street layout or anything, or preliminary plat at this time. Neighbors will be notified in the future. At such time, Habitat moves forward with a preliminary plat, and I think that would probably be the time to discuss street layout and address those concerns.
That sounds okay, but we can't ask, like, what's going to happen with Ninth Street? We just tell the plat comes in front of us?
I think it's safe to say Ninth Street will go through. You know, obviously, those streets are meant not to dead-end permanently. But again, as for the ultimate layout of what happens to the north, we don't have a preliminary plat at this time, so it's, it's hard to talk about, you know, what may or may not occur with those, that street layout. I think it's fair to say, you know, Habitat is focused on other projects at the moment, and will come back to this piece, you know, in the near future. But for right now, we don't have any kind of a proposed layout in front of us.
All right. I had that underlying, too. You're saying you got other projects you're trying to finish. Do you have, could you give us an idea when you might move forward on this?
Well, we are realigning a lot of our funding due to ARPA monies that were received in Douglas County. So, so we're currently kind of reviewing our funding needs, and we're looking at probably twenty-four to thirty-six months in advance currently.
Okay, thank you.
Any preliminary plat, we'll go through the public hearing process. So, again, we'll notify those neighbors in advance. That plat will go to them. You know, I also believe it's probably something that Habitat will reach out to the neighbors with in advance as well.
And I was aware of the Unsteads letter, but they had sent numerous letters to us as well. So, we've, we've met with them and have addressed a few times with them.
Any other questions for Ken? Thank you, Mr. Mar.
Okay.
Public hearing is still open. Is there anyone want to speak regarding twelve B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at six P. M. Item twelve B one, request to small subdivision plats, lot one and two, Compass Hill, no action required. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request for a conditional use permit for lot one, Tillers Fifth Edition, for the purpose of a church in an existing commercial building. applicant, The Glory Tabernacle, Inc., general location, sixteen twenty, Willshire Drive, Suite one oh three. And I will open fourteen A up for public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anyone wanting to speak on fourteen A, please come forward. State your name, address, and sign in, please.
I am Pastor Clifton Hobbs of The Glory Tabernacle. Address is twenty-nine ten Sheridan Road, here in Bellevue, six eight one two three. And, yeah, I'm just here if you have any questions.
Okay, so, public hearing's open. Any questions for Mr. Hobbs? Anybody else wanting to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'll make motion to approve item fourteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Welch. Any comments or question? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item fourteen B, request for a conditional use permit for lot one, First Presbyterian Church of Bellevue, for the purpose of a one hundred and sixty-five foot monopole tower. Applicant, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, general location, twelve twenty Bellevue Boulevard South. And I will open for public hearing, but I want to just have Annie give us an update on any kind of legal opinions.
Yes, I'll just provide some context for not only the council, but those that are here today on this item. This is for a proposed cellular tower. Placement, construction, and modification of wireless service facilities, such as this proposed cell tower, is regulated by the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, and there are specific limitations set out in this federal law to local governments and their ability to deny cell tower applications such as this. So, this act does preserve some authority of the city to regulate the location and construction of the tower. However, as stated, there are limitations on that authority. Just generally amongst other limitations, any decision by this city council to deny a request for a cell tower needs to be in writing and supported by, the key term here is substantial evidence contained in the record. Additionally, a local government cannot deny on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that the facilities or the tower being proposed complies with the FCC or the commission's regulation of those emissions. There's no bright line rule on what constitutes substantial evidence, or enough evidence for this council to properly deny an application for the tower. However, given the nature of some of the opposition the city has received prior to tonight's meeting in regards to this item, I want to provide the following. Typically, courts have found that common citizen fears regarding that a tower could fall or cause damage and safety concerns, given the proximity to a neighborhood or residential setting, courts have found that to be insufficient to constitute substantial evidence in the face of unrefuted engineering. in the face of unrefuted engineering reports that accompany the application for the, the tower. Uh, additionally, sometimes citizens present fears regarding radio frequency emissions and health concerns resulting therefrom. So long as the applicant complies with the FCC's regulations regarding the emissions, um, this council is expressly prohibited from denying the tower on that basis. Uh, generally, courts have found that aesthetic concerns and unsupported concerns regarding reduction in property values do not meet substantial evidence requirements. And so the city appreciates feedback and, and the input from the community on this issue, but I, I just want to express, not only for the council, but for the public listening, that the city's authority is limited by federal law in regard to consideration of this item. Um, and we have to acknowledge that those limitations possibly conflict with some of the citizen concerns that we are receiving.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, so public hearing's open. Is the applicant here? I'll let you start. I'm sure the council has some questions.
Good evening, my name's Steve Ward, fifteen Park Place, Swansea, Illinois, here representing AT&amp;T Mobility in their application for this communication facility at the First Bellevue Church. Um, I'm, I'm, basically, I'm really here to answer any questions that council or citizens may have. Um, as mentioned, we will comply with all requirements of the FCC. We operate in a very narrow band of frequencies and also a very narrow band of power, and we comply with all of those requirements of our license. Um, there was also a mention of a fall zone. Obviously, this tower is designed with all the structural regulations required. We also have designed this tower so that if there would ever be a catastrophic failure, the tower would fall within the property of which we're situated upon. Excuse my voice. Um, I did receive a email from a council member who had some questions, and I did bring some information. Um, one of the questions had to do with, you know, what does this tower serve? You know, is it, is it serving Bellevue? Is it serving, is it broadcasting a large area? And I thought the best way was just to bring some propagation map, so you can kind of see, you know, what this does serve. I don't know if I can approach and hand these out.
Um, do you want to put it on the overhead, or?
We can display them.
There we go. This map shows our current coverage. Um, basically, the green is our in-building coverage, where we can actually, people using their cell phones for, in their homes would have good coverage and good capacity. Yellow is, we have some indoor capa, some, some indoor coverage and outdoor coverage. And then the red is where we have very limited coverage. Uh, we do have some outdoor coverage, but no indoor coverage. Um, the site itself would be located kind of on the south side of that yellow area. But then this map show what this tower will do. As you can see, that covers quite a good area of the Bellevue. Basically, it goes up to where I think I've indicated where Fautinell, um, Country Club is. Um, we still have some marginal coverage up in that area, but a future design in Omaha should fill that area, you know, in for us in the future. You know, there's also been some comments that I had heard, is this to serve Bell, you know, the, uh, Offutt Air Force Base? And that's not the case. We have a separate project going on right now, add off it, it's a several million dollar project where we're doing a base-wide, uh, project for Offutt. So I'm really here to answer these particular questions that council may have.
Councilman Casey?
Yep.
I guess before I asked some questions that I have, can you orientate me on this map? Where are we, where is the proposed location?
Put them side by side if you can. I think there's a room.
So this is three seventy. Here's Jewel Park. Proposed site is down here, and you can see it's really propagating up in that, those areas that direction.
So tell me again, the green represents?
In-building coverage. Green is good.
Okay.
Yellow is a mixture. We have some in-building, but not great in-building, and then red is marginal coverage. You might be able to get a call in your car.
Steve, I'm gonna step back to the microphone since we're recording, so.
Sorry. The green is good coverage, that's in-building. The, uh, yellow, again, would be some in-building, but would, would have street coverage, and then the red is very marginal coverage. You know, and as people have changed the use of their cell phones, you know, we're not just using those like we did with bag phones back in the day. People are using these for data, they're using them for, you know, as a computer source, as a broadband source. So the goal is to bring that service into the homes, not just in your car.
Okay, well, thank you. That was my first question. I have several more. I'm barely a Google expert on cell towers, so I'm hoping you can fill in some blanks for me. Uh, in your discussion at the planning commission meeting, you, uh, talked about the need for a hundred and sixty-five-foot tower. But you also, I believe, talked about leasing out other levels of that tower. So I'm assuming AT&amp;T would be at the top, because you're saying you need a hundred and sixty-five feet, and then you're gonna lease out a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred feet down. So I guess my question is, why would somebody, if you need a hundred and sixty-five feet, why would somebody want to lease a hundred feet from you? If, if you need a hundred and sixty-five feet to get the coverage you need?
Well, one, everybody's needs are different. We can't, we, we don't know who has a particular need in, in advance. What we try and do is to provide that real estate, to provide that vertical space in case anybody does want it. We design that upfront. We try and minimize the proliferation of towers as much as we can, so we're providing that additional space and that structural capacity for anyone that could use it.
Okay. You, uh, in your application, uh, or AT&amp;T's application, you talked about providing the newest equipment, providing citizens with additional choices. Can you share what that additional, uh, those additional choices and what that new equipment is that will be included on it with this tower?
Um, well, basically, this will be, this tower will be set up for four G, which is data. So if you're using the internet at your house, if you're using cable, this would be another choice for high-speed data.
An- another choice for AT&amp;T?
Another choice for the citizens. If they, if they're not happy with their cable bill, they could switch to AT&amp;T for their data.
Okay, so will this tower have five G capability?
In the future, yes.
Okay, but, but as you build it out, it's?
As we build it out, yes.
Okay.
That technology's rolling out now. It's not here currently.
Okay. How does, uh, AT&amp;T determine that the area is underserved? Uh, is, is it just a survey? Or how, how do you know that?
It's a, it's a mixture. I mean, that's the RF engineer. I mean, he'll, they basically know where they've got coverage by these propagation tools. We also get customer complaints, and actually, those are logged. Enough customer complaints creates a, um, budget, and a budget creates the searchering. So if, if we know that we're losing, customers are losing calls, and customers are switching services, we'll try and modify that's, that area and build a new site.
Okay, so as I, I looked at this, it looks like there's, uh, about fifteen registered cell towers within about a three-mile radius of this proposed site. Uh, ten of those towers are a hundred feet or higher, and, uh, all of them are eleven hundred fifty to twelve thirty, I believe, uh, elevation where those towers set. So I live on the east side of the city, uh, but I have great coverage. I don't use A and T, I use a different carrier. But I have great coverage, uh, certainly on the east side where I live, inside my house and outside my house. And, and I believe I'm pinging off of the tower right across the street, which is a hundred and twenty-one feet. So why does AT&amp;T need a hundred and sixty-five feet to provide the same service that my carrier gives me at a hundred and twenty-one feet?
What, I, I mean, that depends on what their network is. It all depends on where the network is. You know, this is our network, and you can see where the hole is. That's what we're trying to fill in. Where that other carrier has sites, I don't know. I mean, I know where AT&amp;T has a site, it's right here. That's our closest site, and it's not covering, you know, that area.
Okay. So, uh, in your application, you detailed four other sites, and I think almost all of them are right across Harville, Little John Road and Sherwood Forest Housing Area. There's a couple of other areas, and I, I just wanted to ask if you looked at these, uh, one, there's a hundred and thirty-five-foot tower uh, on Herman Drive. It's at a eleven hundred fifteen foot elevation. Uh, it, this area is not adjacent to a residential area. Um, and there appears to be a lot of property there to add an additional tower. Is that an area that you considered?
How far away is that from this location?
I, I, I'm not sure, but I'm guessing it's less, it, it's certainly not a mile.
I, I mean, we're, we're talking a pretty tight area. If it's a mile, it's gonna be too far away. It's just not gonna propagate against that ridge and cover that area that we're trying to, to cover. And we did look at the other towers across the way. And I could, I've got some pictures of it. Everybody wants to see those.
And, and I saw that, and I, again, from the planning commission, one of those towers is a Black Hills Tower.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I believe that tower's vacant.
It is.
I'm not positive. Uh, so I, I don't recall why that wasn't acceptable to you.
One, it's a little low. It's only a hundred and twenty-five feet, so we'd be able to get a hundred and twenty foot on that tower, so it didn't really meet our coverage objective. And Black Hills Energy really wasn't interested in leasing space on that tower. They, right now, have that tower scheduled for a decommission.
So.
It's not in use. There's no antennas on it.
So, uh, purchasing, putting a new tower, I mean, I'm not necessarily proposing putting a, a tower even closer to residential homes, but there's already a tower there. Taking that tower down and putting a hundred and sixty-five-foot tower there, is, is that an option?
Not, I mean, dealing with Black Hills Energy to buy their property and buy their tower and replace it, that's a, that's a nightmare.
But, I.
I mean, it's just, I mean, I can't foresee that being a business case that would be a solution. Plus, you'd be building a tower in a, more of a residential area.
Okay. Uh, my final question is, um, regarding the, the effect on property values. And I know you've heard all this. I'm sure you go around the country, uh, to, to do this. But, uh, and, and I know, uh, Ms. Matthews talked about, uh, our limitations regarding the effect on property values, but it appears this could be a pretty significant, uh, impact on property values. Matter of fact, one of the residents, uh, as they did some research using the county assessor data, came up with three hundred and thirty to six hundred and sixty thousand dollar negative impact on the houses in that surrounding area. Uh, impact on, uh, the resale value on their homes because, as, as close as they'll be to this cell tower. So I guess my question is, um, how do you mesh providing the service that obviously AT&amp;T wants to do, and the citizens want that, with the impact that it, that putting a tower in a residential, residential area? Uh, how, how do you, how do you, how do you evaluate that, or do you even evaluate it?
Well, quite frankly, we've never really seen a negative impact on the property values. We've done several appraisals over the years, and there's been no net effect. I can't imagine that the appraiser is able to project what the effect would be negatively on property values of something that's not there. Now, I don't believe, from what I've seen, the towers across the street or across the way, I forget the name of the street, Little John, that those have had a negative effect on anybody's property values.
Yeah, I don't know.
From what I've seen over the historical that we looked at.
Yeah, and let me be clear, I'm not saying the county assessor said that that's the value, looking at the, at a seven to twenty percent decrease in property values, where if, if you go out and look, look at it, that's what realtors say. Uh, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but that's what realtors, several, uh, realtor agencies, uh, say that. You can, you can Google that. So based on that, you look at the numbers, and I get it, realtors are trying to sell property, and I, I understand that. But clearly, uh, it's something that people think about when they buy a house, if there's a cell, a hundred and sixty-five-foot cell tower next door. I, I'm sure that does affect many people, so.
Again, we've not seen that in the appraisals that we've done. And Google, again, I think you could Google the other way and find other information on Google.
I, I didn't find that, but I'll take your word for it.
I'd be happy to send you those appraisals if you'd like to see them.
Okay. I, I guess I would just, uh, conclude with saying I, I have a couple of concerns with this tower going in here. Uh, one of the requirements, that was mentioned, the conditional use permit, and this RS eighty-four, uh, zone property is condit, conditional use cannot be induced to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, and that it not diminishes, impair the value of the property values in the neighborhood. But I would submit that this is exactly what this does. This certainly impairs, uh, the property value of those homes that are in the, in the immediate area. I'm also concerned with the placement as, this is right next to Harville Drive. Harville Drive is one of the two, uh, primary entrances from the west, uh, into Old Town Bellevue. And in my twenty-seven years in Bellevue, this is the most excitement I've ever seen about Old Town Bellevue with the wonderful things that are happening. Uh, new homes, new apartments, matter of fact, new homes going right around the corner from this proposed site, uh, new businesses. And this is what, uh, folks arriving to this exciting new Old Town Bellevue are gonna see, is a hundred and sixty-five-foot tower, along with some towers already existing. Um, and it's certainly not what the neighbors in, in the general area want to see too. So I, I guess I would just implore you to, 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 to make sure that you have really looked at every other possible site uh, that is away from residential homes in this area.
Well, this is a very residential area.
But, but as I pointed out on Herman Drive, for example, not a residential area.
Again, it's a mile, mile away. It's just too far, you know, out for it to cover this area. And as far as any safety effects to the roads, I think I explained that the tower has a built-in fall zone, so it would never fall more than eighty feet away from the height of the tower.
Fall zone personally, again, it's primarily, it's, it diminishes what we're, we as a city are trying to do in this part of town, which was, is beautify it, make it, make it what it can be, and I, I think this is counterproductive to that. And, and certainly, I, I am concerned about the property values and the homeowners that have to, to live next to a hundred and sixty-five-foot tower. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you said that a mile away is a too far of a zone. What is your, what is the dimensions of your zone that you're talking about with?
Um, we typically work within a half, between a quarter and a half-mile area.
Okay, so when you come in to look at a city of, of putting a cell tower up, what are you specifically looking at?
From my business, what we do is we come in and we inventory existing structures. Now, is that going to be a building? Is that a, like, existing tower? Um, we will look at all those and inventory those and explore those. And then after that, we then go through the zoning and then see what are the zoning areas that we can, is there, is there industrial? Is there heavy commercial? Is there commercial? Is there, what, where else can we do? So if that fails in, in this area, it's highly residential. We look for a large property, so this is probably one of the larger properties that we could find. And then we place the tower at the rear of that property. I mean, it's basically kind of working our way down. We did present all the existing towers to the RF engineers as part of our package. And then they reviewed those and then came back and said, this is the one that really works for us.
And is it because of the elevation, because, one part is the elevation, as, as to where it's at, one part is the size of the lot?
It, well, that, that's from our, my perspective, not from the radio frequency perspective. We're trying not to put this in a tiny little lot wedged in between homes, which is, I'm sure you've all seen those. We're trying to keep it so it's not immediately next to, you know, somebody else's house type of thing. We're looking for a large property, a school, a park, a church, if we don't have a large commercial piece.
Okay. I, I'm sure there'll be more questions as this comes along.
Any other questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, um, does this tire, tower, cell tower have to be a hundred and sixty-five feet? I know you're talking about maybe three or four other.
It's, yeah, it's a combination. I mean, we're not building this for the other users. We're building this for AT&amp;T. So this is the direction that we got from the AT&amp;T RF engineers, is this is what they need to bridge that area. And then again, when we come down from the other side, we can fill in from the north. But this is the elevation that we were given. So anything that's less than that, you're gonna sacrifice coverage and probably maybe require another site.
It just seems like you're really southwest of the area you're trying to cover. To me, it's, I mean, when, when you pointed out Jewel Park, that's north of where you're sitting this tire, tower. It just seems like it, it just, to me, it's not more centrally located, and I don't want to push it to. it, it just, to me, it's not more centrally located. And I don't want to push it to someone else's property, but to me, you're, you're really at the, the base. To me, you want to service this, but we're going to put it here. Now, I assume part of that is where do we put it, but?
No, it comes from the RF engineers because they, they look at the area and that's, that's where they were centralized. They were actually, the ring was centered on the church. It just happened to be centered there. So then we reviewed the area surrounding that. But this is where they said they needed to be. These maps are difficult to interpret. That's why many states have enacted laws to actually not allow these to be presented because it's, they are confusing.
Well, I'm sure a lot of times you got to find a willing participant to say, yes, we would like you here.
That's usually the easiest part of the job.
Saying is, if I can find someone willing, saying, yes, put it here. And then when you go a hundred and sixty-five feet high and say, I could possibly put three other people on this tower. I mean, that's going to put money back in AT&T's power, uh, pocket. So there, I mean, a lot of it is a willing person, company, church to say, yes, we'll let you put it here because they're probably getting a benefit out of it. But the higher you go, the benefit is going to be you to place more people on that, on that tower.
We'd be happy to build a single user tower at one sixty-five, only for us. Be more than happy to.
Okay. Have you, have you ever on some of your towers put, we got a tower in church that they put like a little structure around it up there. It was at another church property lot where they put like a cross on it. So they, I guess they concealed the little stuff you guys put up there. Is that doable here?
Oh, certainly doable. You've seen it. Um, it's doable. Um, the one issue, and I've seen it up in Kansas City over by Blue Springs Parkway, there's one at a church. And it started out as, you know, one cross on three panels. What these panels are, they're stealth material. It's a manufactured material. If you look at it, it looks like styrofoam, but it's a structural material. It can be made to look like anything, glass, stucco, brick. It can be any color. It can be manufactured with that. And then basically our antennas can see through that material. So we use that to hide antennas at times when stealth, we call it stealth applications needed. The only issue would be, you know, our antennas are going to be oriented at zero, one hundred and two hundred and forty, that triangle that you see. If the next guy goes on and his are off, then you've got those platforms that look a little cattywampus. But if your question is, can we put stealth panels on? Certainly. It's not ideal, but we can do it.
One, one thing you mentioned is yellow is some good indoor and red is very limited coverage that you're trying to get to. You know, we're just going through a process now in, in Bellevue that we got fast wire putting a fiber in ground. We got alloy, another company, that's going to be putting fiber in ground. I think that would also give them options as far as, uh, you know, to help with their wifi or whatever inside of their home. I mean, I, I would assume you're all competing against each other for the same type of market.
Yeah, yes, yeah. I mean, they're, they're, they're a communication provider, so, so are we. It's just a different method of delivering that service.
You did say you looked at a couple of other sites. Was there anything significantly north of where you're looking at now or?
No. I mean, we, we looked at the park and we didn't really think it was conducive to the park or the cemetery.
You looked at Jewel Park? You, you don't think your tower would get up above those trees or it's just not where you want it?
We just didn't think it was a good, actually a good location. It was a little bit out of our search area. We wanted, they wanted to be further to the south. I typically don't go to the parks until kind of a last.
Of course, I'm saying that and I don't know how everybody feels, but I don't, you know, I, I hate to push something to another neighborhood and we just go through this with another neighborhood. But I was, I was thinking of the cemetery or the park. Jewel Park, you know, it's sort of, I, I think is within that quarter of a mile, a half mile of what you said, type of gap. Yeah, that's all the question I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, um, public hearings open. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Beth Kona One. I live at twelve oh nine Bellevue Boulevard South, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight zero zero five. I live directly across the street north from the First Presbyterian Church. My husband Ed and I oppose the church's application for a conditional use permit to build a one hundred and sixty-five foot monopole tower. We have invested forty years into our home and neighborhood. We oppose this due to the sheer enormity of this tower, which would be one of the tallest towers in the area on top of one of the highest elevations in the area. At one hundred and sixty-five feet, the tower would be an order of magnitude three point seven times allowed by current RS eighty-four zone code. The City of Bellevue zoning cor, ordinance six point oh, six point oh, six point oh two states that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, as Mr. Casey had said, for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. We have submitted a petition from the neighbors within a three hundred foot radius of the church's property, plus those within line of sight who do indeed feel this monopole tower will be injurious to their enjoyment and will substantially diminish their property value. Ed and I would not object to the church constructing a smaller scale cell tower similar to the ones at Pilgrim Lutheran Church. Can I give these to the? Pilgrim Lutheran Church is at twenty-fifth and Fairview and Thanksgiving Church at thirty-six and Highway three seventy. This would be more congruous with the zone, with their zoning code, church architecture and the neighborhood aesthetic. If a smaller scale pole does not fit AT&T requirements, then they can take their one hundred and sixty-five foot monopole tower and place it in a rural, industrial or commercial setting rather than a residential neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Mike Christensen, eleven oh five Bellevue Boulevard South. My question would actually be for Steve with the map that he had up there. Um, there are three current towers that he talked about on Little John Road. One of those towers is a hundred and forty foot, forty-five feet tall. It sits at an elevation that's seventeen feet higher than the proposed site at the Presbyterian Church. So if you take those tallies together, that puts that tower at a hundred and sixty-two feet versus a hundred and sixty-five feet. Now, part of that, top of that tower is being utilized already. Looks, it appears that there's space underneath that for additional antennas, probably ten to twelve feet down. I'd like to see a map put together with placement of that antenna on that tower and what the coverage would be.
Okay, the council will address the question for you, so he can come up and answer.
Well, he said he was here to answer questions. That's why I asked him.
We'll ask him. Any other questions? Any questions for Mr. Christensen? Councilman Cook?
Mr. Christensen, how, what are the height on those tire, towers, do you know?
Those particular towers?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of the height of those.
Okay, thank you.
The, I mean, the existing tower at the church is approximately, the bell tower is probably fifty feet at the Presbyterian Church right now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Please come forward regarding fourteen B.
Hi, my name is Pat Leonard. I live at eleven oh six Bellevue Boulevard South. And I have a couple of questions. One of them is, um, if there are subsequent leases that are placing their antennas at lower levels, are they going to have to go through the same approval process or is this because of the tower?
This is because of the tower. So I don't think they go through this process, do they, Tammy?
No, um, co-locations do not require another public hearing. Um, once a tower is in place, people are allowed to co-locate as long as it doesn't result in a change of the height. Or does it result in a change of the lease area on the ground?
Okay, well, the, if they lease, uh, an area lower on the tower, it doesn't change the highest, the height of the tower itself, but it does put radiation at a much lower level on the tower. And, uh, this is going to be co-located with a, um, a preschool? Does anybody have any consideration about the effects of that on the kids?
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Pat Wunder.
Pat, okay. All right, um, I think Annie's, uh, you know, the legal side of that, um, goes back to if these, uh, emissions are in excess of federal standards, um, or if they meet federal standards, we can't say anything about that.
That's correct. It's expressed in federal law, the, the act that if the applicant or the provider in this case complies with federal standards of the emissions, uh, that a city cannot deny it on that basis.
Okay, but are they gonna, is, apparently there's not going to be any kind of hearing on these subsequent antenna locations. So?
That, that hearing is now, so the council's considering worst case scenario here, so.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Yep. Anybody else want to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. Um, Steve, would you come up? I have one more question. I don't know if the council has anymore. So regarding Mr. Christensen's question, um, which kind of leads me to my own question. Can this area be covered with two smaller towers, maybe the location that Mr. Christensen's talking about and then building one of these farther to the north? I mean, is that a?
Well, we've already said that we're planning in the future to build one to the north and from Omaha to bridge that gap where you still see that yellow and that little bit of red. That's in a future build. So we will be building another tower.
But is there?
Not in, though.
Is there a case where AT&T instead of putting one big tower up, puts two towers in to cover the same area, smaller towers?
Typically not because of the way these propagate. You're, now you're starting to run into ridge lines. You're running into tree lines, you know, where does the second tower go? It's also, you know, you're asking for hundreds, if not hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, which would again be passed on to customers.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve while he's up here?
I do have, I was asked about the tower across the street, so I do have a picture if you want to see that.
Sure.
That's the existing towers across the street. I thought I'd just bring it. And again, that's a hundred and forty-five footer on a higher elevation than what we are. And as you can see, it's, there's an, there's an antenna array on the top. But you can also see there's antennas coming all the way down that tower for a good distance. So we just couldn't fit in right below that existing array.
Do you have any? No, you can't, you can't talk from there. You can come up and speak. Public hearings open, so hold on a minute.
And then the second tower you can see is, is shorter, but again, it's got a fairly good load of antennas on it. Thank you.
So do you know what the height of that pilgrim's landing was, the picture we had up there before?
Is that the monument type? I, I don't. If I, let me look at it here. I mean, guessing, I'd say a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty.
So a disguise on that one would be a pretty tall structure itself.
In my world, there's a saying, the more you try and hide something, the bigger it gets.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
But, sir, while you're, Councilman Casey? While you're still standing, um, do you give, can you give us an update on the status of FAA approval? I know what you talked about the planning commission, the base approving and, uh, no objections, I believe, but I think we're still waiting on FAA approval.
I'm waiting for that final approval to come through and everything we're doing is contingent upon that with off it. I don't want to say we have it in. I think it's in, but I don't, I don't want to say for sure.
And then as far as the actual, uh, ground and, uh, how stable that, uh, particular area is, that, that will happen after approval? Your, your folks will come in and, and do core samples?
Yeah, and those will be provided to the city with our foundation designs. So if, and again, if we find that's a heavily filled area or unstable area, then it's, it's, it's something that we can't, I mean, it's obviously something nobody could use.
I, I guess my, my final question is, are, are you, are you telling me that you're not willing or the engineers are not willing to look at another location for this? You're dead set and this is the only option?
Well, this is the option that we're presenting. I mean, if, I don't, I don't believe that when people come before council with a conditional use permit or a business, the council says, why don't you go here, why don't you go here, why don't you go here? There's substantial money that's been invested in this location. We think it's the best location for this area.
And did I hear you say if, if approved, you would be willing to put a, uh, a cover on, on the array, antenna array? And you'd be willing to do single source, AT&T would be the only antennas on that tower?
If that's something the council would want, we typically don't hear that. We typically hear that they want the capacity for other people to use one structure, but if that's something council wants, we'd be happy to do it. I would want to work with staff on what that stuffing would be. You know, if you're talking to triangular with a cross or something like that, yeah, we could, we can put something together.
But, but di, did you say that you had concerns if, if there were two other users on that that would, might be tough to hide all of that, uh, antenna array?
No, it just, I mean, because what you do is, if you're, if I'm imagining what you're talking about, see, AT&T's antennas or whoever's antennas are behind that cross on that shroud. So if we have a monopole with a smaller shroud, the next guy might ma, not match that angle exactly. We don't have a way to really guarantee what their angles of propagation are. Now, if you want to say we want a bigger shroud to cover that whole area, like the cross on the left, then we are looking at a beefy or tight pole. It's structural. That's a lot of wind load.
Thank you. Have you, uh, have you done a hundred and sixty-five foot monopole with one of these covers on it?
With, with one of these?
Something similar?
No. The tallest I've done was a hundred and twenty. And then we just did one over in Omaha at the Luther Memorial, uh, church uh, over on Western Avenue. That was about a hundred and five foot.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Welch?
Just for my clarification. So Steve, you're saying you've never done a hundred and sixty-five footer before or you've never done a hundred and sixty-five with a cover?
You're asking if I've ever built one of those at a hundred and sixty-five feet? The answer is no.
Okay, so.
I'm just a guy. I'm not AT&T.
I understand.
So had they, I don't know.
Have they done other areas a hundred and sixty-five foot before? In the, in the, in the Omaha Bellevue area?
Towers?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So we have other towers in Bellevue that are at a hundred and sixty-five foot?
Bellevue, I don't know.
But Omaha, obviously Omaha?
Omaha, yeah. I mean, we have taller towers in the area for sure.
Okay, the tall, do you have any idea what the tallest tower is that you have?
That AT&T owns or that they're on?
Either one.
That they're on, I think is a thousand footer.
Okay.
So it's an OPBD, OPBD tower. Typically, we run between a hundred and two hundred and forty.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Cook?
I don't know if any staff would know. Do we have a hundred and sixty-five foot tower in Omaha or Bellevue?
I know that we have some that are taller, um, yes. I don't recall how tall the Pilgrim Lutheran one is. I would assume a hundred to a hundred and twenty is probably a good guess. Uh, the one at Thanksgiving, I think is, uh, shorter significantly. Uh, the one at Thanksgiving, I think is uh, shorter, significantly shorter than that. Um, I would agree that I have not seen a camouflaged one at a hundred and sixty-five feet. Um, typically those have been approved as single monopole towers. Um, again, just because. Does it draw more attention at that height? Does it look more out of place?
But to get that cover on that thing, it's not gonna be a, a single pole, I would assume.
Pins on the cover. Um, if we, you know, the monopole comes up like that previous picture where you have your antennas on a triangular platform up on the top. So what I've seen, like the one in Kansas City I was trying to describe, it's, it's maybe, it sounds tall, but it just covers those antennas. It's just that tall.
I see what you're saying.
And then if somebody else would come on, they would put another cover.
Yeah.
Down below that. It all gets into the structural loadings, so could you get two or three maybe? Instead of four, I don't know.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, public hearing still open. Anybody else wanna come up? Please come up, yep. Let uh, uh, got one more in front of you. I'll let you come back up after that. Hold on.
Since that picture's uh, I'd like, just like to point out to the tower to the left, how close those two antennas are to each other. There's space underneath the top of that antenna for something similar to that. And I would like to propose that they look into placing an antenna there and see what their coverage is before a decision's made.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Nazek. I live at fourteen ten Franklin Street. Uh, my backyard, as I look out my back windows, I can see these two towers. Uh, are they ideal? No, but I live with them. However, having this additional tower in the location that's recommended. And then listening to the options that were available tonight, I've heard fantastic questions digging into what-if scenarios and what are our options? And the one that really resonates the most for me, it really comes down to we're trying to promote Old Town Bellevue and really grow it. And I think the direction is going well, but it is one of two access points. And it's actually the prettiest access point coming into Old Town Bellevue. And to add that tower, I think will degrade and being an unattractive site. Uh, listening to options that were proposed, Jewel Park, Jewel Park had a tower there at one time, just a walk-up tower. No longer there, but it has an open space. It seems like a logical location to look at. I'm not an engineer. And I know that engineers are um, the ones who usually make these recommendations. The image that, that was displayed initially with the, the location so far south of their coverage issues. Also doesn't seem logical, so I appreciate the questions and I think you guys have done a wonderful job digging into it. And I hope that there isn't a decision made tonight because I do think there are enough questions that haven't been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. Sir, I, this is your chance just to oppose, just state your name, address and.
Yeah, I hadn't planned on speaking until I saw that picture. Kinda gave me a visceral reaction, you know? My name is William Ford, F O R D, like the car. I live at thirteen hundred Lord Boulevard. Harvell's very scenic. Drive down there. I drive by the church, that spot every day, ten times a day. I just like to state I'm opposed to that right there. You say that's over on Little John Road. I know all about that. Towers over there. They should look into using those towers. Uh, Black Hills energy's not conducive. Yeah, that's not a big deal to me. It's like, that's their problem. Make it conducive. I heard the city attorney say that your chances of thwarting them are, are gonna be slim. I think they should look for alternatives and I also ask that you. Delay a decision until you can find more information. I'm opposed. I've been in Bellevue since uh, sixty-five, however long that is. I love Bellevue. I ain't Mr. Bellevue. That guy's standing right in front of me. Sitting in front of me. I'm standing in front of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding fourteen B?
Very interesting discussion. Do I have to sign in again, Mr. Mayor?
Nope, just say your name.
Just Kyle Roan. Um, I live in Old Town. And I want to repeat uh, what the gentleman over here said. Y'all have asked some awesome questions, okay? But I've got a couple of my own, just from listening to all that. Number one, five G's not a rolling out type of technology. It's here. My phone's got five G sitting right here. So if we're gonna build it, why not have five G? But the question I have for him is what is the megabit per second running gonna be for data? That's one question because a five G um, server in my house doesn't get two hundred megabits per second. So I mean, I can't use it. I need something a little bit more robust because we do a lot of video conferencing. Uh, from our house. So the other question I would like to ask too. With that, it seems like the Black Hills energy thing is the path of most resistance. As you said, it would be a nightmare to go through that. So I don't know if he's really explored that or if he just took the path of least resistance. So I mean, if Black Hills is available and we can do it, why do they have more ability to? Deny it than the city has to deny it? Cause what I've heard Ms. Matthews say. We need to change that law because we can't be citizens. We can't control our own destiny. It seems like a. Um, telecommunication company come in, we wanna put it here, you can't say anything about it. That's the way I heard it, Ms. Matthews. So I would suggest the people that are opposed also call Mike Flood. Or if you live closer to Omaha, then call uh, General, what's his name? He's not my representative.
Congressman Bacon?
Yeah, Congressman Bacon. Let's see, uh, to, to do that because that law just seems like that's antithetical to citizenship. We should be able to determine through our elected leaders where and where not we wanna put cell towers. And it shouldn't be that restrictive. But anyway, that's the only thing I would like to say. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak regarding fourteen B? Anybody left? Any? Um, so we have a question for, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. More of a comment and a suggestion. I have enjoyed the questions as well. I, I think uh, Councilmember Casey has done an excellent job. Need some water. Do- uh, doing his homework and I appreciate that. And he served on the planning commission that hears these things. And I think they too have listened well and done their homework. It puts us in an awkward position. I kinda feel like the rug's pulled out from underneath the council. In that the federal law which oversees and uh, overrides what we can do locally is in control. I'm sensitive to the neighbors. I can certainly understand property values, even though there's conflicting. Information on whether it does affect them. I'm sensitive to the people having concerns with whether or not. There is uh, frequency emitted that is hurting them. Or more likely even the children who are more sensitive to it. And I, I certainly am sensitive to that. But if federal law is overriding, I have little left except to support this. Or not support it and have the case where it's a strong case for a good reason not to. So that when it goes to court, which is likely to happen, because Bellevue has already taken the step of denying one tower. Uh, I believe it was in about two thousand and three. And that was taken to court and challenged, so there is court precedent. We have very little wiggle room, but it seems to me the one area we do have wiggle room. Is to delay tonight and to ask the developer to explore these other sites. And to come back at either the next or the subsequent meeting. And give us the engineer rationale beyond what we have heard tonight. So as I said, I have a comment and then a suggestion. My suggestion would be to lay this over. I don't know how appropriate a time would be. I don't know how time-sensitive this is. Obviously developers always wanna do it immediately. So I guess I'm, before making any motions.
We got a public hearing open still, so.
Oh, okay. Then I will just make that suggestion. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Councilman Casey?
So I, I would just follow up on the Councilmember uh, Prester's uh, comment. And I, I guess if it's appropriate, ask, are you, are you willing to consider, for example, Mr. Christensen's? Suggestion to take a look at that tower and see if it really is feasible uh, to, to put your antenna array on that tower? That we discussed, that Mr. Christian discussed, or, or any other location. Are you, are you amenable to, to delay a, a decision tonight? To, to explore other options?
Steve, would you please come to the podium? It's like, record you. Getting your steps in.
Um, we'd be happy to bring whatever information council would want to make a decision. Um, we can look at this tower. This is on city property. The city would have to, can I walk over here? There's an antenna.
Yeah, actually, if you can talk from there, it'd be good. Talk into Su- Susan's mic. Good.
If you see from here to here, that's an antenna going downward. That blocks that whole area. Then we've got antenna, 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 antenna. So it's the city tower. If they can. Knock all those guys off, we could certainly look at it, but right now that tower's full. I'd be happy to look at Mr. Casey, and I, you said you had a couple of locations. Be happy to look at those. Happy to, when I say I'd be happy, I'll have the RF engineer and I'll ask him to be here at the next meeting. Um, if we can look at the other locations that have been mentioned here.
Okay, and I, one question while you're here, Mr. Roan asked a good question. I'm just curious. We've got all the, all these um, fiber providers coming into town and they're advertising, they're, you're gonna have a gig of speed at. At every residence. Do you know what that speed is that this tower would bring to a house?
I'd have to, I'd have to go digging. I doubt if it's a um, fiber speed.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Prester?
What kind of a timeframe would you need to do that exploration with the engineers?
A month. I mean, I, I mean, I think we could come back next month. He could, I mean, he can propagate these pretty quickly. Um, if the city needs more time to explore that antenna, that'd be up to the city to let me know. But right now, I don't believe that tower's feasible.
Okay, so approximately a month.
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Watson?
I have a question for Annie. Will this, by delaying this tonight, are we still within our? Boundaries of being able to make a decision and not set us up for something else?
So a city needs to respond um, within a reasonable period of time after the request is filed with the city pursuant to the act. Um, but that's taking into consideration the account and nature and scope of the requests. Uh, Tammy, when was this received? I, I would imagine we're within what would be considered a hundred or reasonable.
It was originally received December twenty-second.
Okay, so I think, I think we have some, some leeway, given the request.
Okay, and um, Steve, again, you know, our city's not trying to be difficult, but we wanna make this a win-win and make it the best for our residents. And make it a win-win, you know, for the business and not just slam this stuff down somebody's throat and say, put up with it. We wanna be.
I understand we're gonna be a long-term tenant of both the church and of the city, so we fully understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cook?
I would ask if we delay it and, and I, I can support that. Um, I'd like to have maybe our staff or. Or whoever, can we get a map of where every one of these towers are throughout Bellevue? And maybe their elevation and the height of the tower? I mean, I don't know how many we have. Are we talking?
I don't know that staff could provide that. I mean, a- all I can do is, you know, go back and look at what potentially has been approved. But you've got numerous co-locations.
Okay.
Um, you've got numerous alterations and so.
Well, and I'm not asking really who's on. I mean, it's, we got a tower here. The elevation is twelve hundred and thirty feet and it's a hundred and thirty-foot tower.
We can go back and look at the ones that have been approved the last twenty years.
I mean, I don't want this.
Location and the height.
Well, i- i- it just seems, I, I, I think what's going on is they're trying to come back into these areas and, and establish more capacity. Everything is wifi and everything's going crazy. I mean, we're hearing it from people that wanna put stuff in the sky and we're hearing it from people that are putting in the ground and. We're, we're getting a lot of activity and once it is all over, it's all gonna be good, but it's painful to get there there.
I can tell you, we haven't done a new tower in the city since twenty fifteen. It's been cyclical. Um, you know, there was a number of them from the late nineties, the mid to late nineties to about twenty fifteen, and then we haven't had one since. Uh, we see a lot of co-locations. And this is the first application for a new tower we've had in eight years, but I can also tell you that AT&T isn't the only one. There's, there's at least two others that are going to submit application for new towers. So again, I see it being cyclical. As these towers that are existing are at capacity with co-locations, I, I believe the city is going to see more applications for newer towers.
Well, maybe we could get a little bit ahead of it by, if we, I don't know what all the elevations are. Keep on hearing something around twelve hundred. If we knew, I mean, I don't know how everybody's talking, you know, do we need a tower this high? Or can we have two towers this high and get the same thing done and, and look like, you know, that, the picture from before? I mean.
And, and you know, honestly, we don't have engineers that can determine that, you know, that specifically RF engineers that come from the communications world. I, I don't know that there's anyone at the city that can say with exact determination that we've got this many towers, we're good. Um, I think, you know, the, the burden is on the applicant to show us. That they can't co-locate on another tower or that another area is not going to work.
Yeah.
And that's, that's part of the required application process.
Okay.
There's actually several sites out there. I used antenna search. Uh, there's, there's I think three uh, prominent sites. That you can go out and see where every private uh, sanctioned, approved, non-approved. Uh, antenna that's anywhere in the country.
I, I'd still like to know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking you to spend weeks and weeks, but if, if it's an afternoon that you could.
No, we can, we can, like I said, I can have staff pull the data of what's been approved, like in the last twenty-five years. Um, where and what the heights are and make a list.
Cause I mean, we do have some high elevations, especially probably, I'm, I'm just gonna guess east, say east of thirty-sixth or Fort Crook or wherever. And, and I mean, if there's other option, and we, we never hear really good options that we looked at this place. I, I sit here and say, and I'm not being disrespectful to the gentleman, but they're looking at what's best for their company. And what I'm saying is, can we step in and say, hey, let's do this a little bit different? Or with this, you know, we need to be able to present something to say, cause you put one here and put one here and maybe, you know, I mean, we got some flood plains. So maybe a different tower there higher that would be able to hit something that isn't so high, maybe at twelve hundred feet. I, 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 I know nothing about what that gentleman does for a work, but it just seems like every, of course, two thousand and fifteen. It, it doesn't happen frequently, but you're saying we're coming down, we're gonna have these same issues with other people coming in here. And I'd like for the city to be able to come back with some ideas and some ju- suggestions and recommendations. On maybe, take a look at maybe three or four different sites and see if you can accomplish it there.
Sure. Uh, but again. You're, you're always probably gonna have opposition at whatever site that you go to. So I mean, it's something the city's going to have to deal with, um, no matter where these towers are, are going.
I hear you.
Public hearing still open. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Sure, real quick.
Jeff Nazek, fourteen ten Franklin. Um, is it time that you, since this is one of maybe more? I don't know what it would cost, but trust is a factor for all of us, and the trust comes down to. Do we trust all of these providers or do we get a subcontracted out RF engineer ourselves to say, let's be sure when they said this was the only place we can go? Oh, wait a minute. This RF engineer says you could really do well here. Just just a thought.
Thank you.
Well, we'll take collections after the meeting. We'll hire that person. No, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing on fourteen B. Um, I just want to say, a lot of, lot of great discussion, a lot of, um. Thank you for coming out and giving your input. The citizens are driving the demand for these services, which, um, puts us in this spot. We just went through this with. Uh, we're going through it with fiber right now. I mean, we're having issues with thirty-inch pedestals, let alone hundred and sixty-five-foot poles. Um, and we're only gonna get more of these utilities wanting to be here, so. And I'm hearing what you're saying and. It almost warrants, I mean, we might not be able to delay this one this long, but maybe there is a study that this. City can hire from one of these RF engineers to come up with some kind of future. Layout for Bellevue. I I don't know, just a thought, but. Any other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
I just want to commend, uh, Councilman Casey. I mean, he did, this is in his ward. He did a lot of research on this. He went door-to-door with a lot of people. He asked all kinds of questions. He kept all of us informed as to what he was doing. And he he just did a great job on bringing a lot of information, representing his ward, representing the citizens. And keeping us informed as to what was happening. So great job on that, Rich.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree that this has been a good discussion and I would commend the citizens for not only the petition raising concerns. And hoping that they would be heard. I think they have been heard by the council. And as a result of that, I would like to make a motion that we delay this until March twenty-first. And the purpose being to assess. Alternative sites for feasibility of location. And then if I get a second, I would ask, what is that going to look like? What's actually going to happen between now and the twenty-first? So my motion is to delay until March twenty-first. The decision on this cell tower.
I will second that motion.
So a motion by Prester, seconded by Casey to delay fourteen B until March twenty-first. Now, Councilman Prester, you have something else to add?
Yes, Mayor, I would just ask, uh. Steve, maybe if you could tell us what you will be doing in that month time. And then if there is anything that the city will do or oversee, I would like all of us to hear. Since this isn't a delay, but what's going to take place to assess other locations? So if 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 you would please come back up first and then Ms. Palm. And thank you for your patience and, uh. You've probably done this before and there may have been worse times, but.
My first one. Um, what we'll be doing is I'll get with the radio frequency engineer for AT&T who handles the Omaha. Service area, and I'll present him the discussion. And I may, I may reach out to you, Mr. Casey. Um, for a couple of particulars of what you wanted us to look at. And what we'll do is I'll have him review those and we'll prepare the similar type of mapping and we'll look at those and. When I come back, I'll have him here with me to. Be able to speak to this from a more of a scientific, mathematical perspective. Um, I can say. One of the problems that I've run across, cause I have been, I have done this more than once. Is it's very difficult for a city or jurisdiction to say. Here's the three spots to go to. Because as soon as you say, here's the three spots and you've spent the money, they're gonna say, well, we really want to be over here. Um, what I have seen jurisdictions do if they're looking to have more of a input. Is to say, we encourage these on existing tow, you know, set up a priority. Here's your existing towers, here's existing rooftops, here's city property. Here's industrial property and then have them work through a criterion rather than. Here's a spot you have to go to because I'd say nine times out of ten, it just doesn't fit that model.
That's what I was trying to say. You just said it better.
I don't know. Thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you for doing the work. And then I would ask Ms. Palm to comment as well.
Yeah, um, basically from our perspective, all the technical engineering is going to have to come from the applicant. As I previously mentioned, the burden is on them to, you know, show what is going to best fit their need. Um, and why they can't co-locate or can't use a different location. Um, to Mr. Cook's request, we will put together a spreadsheet of the CUPs that have been approved by the city council over the last twenty, twenty-five years. Their locations and where they're at and the height that they're at.
Good, thank you for that, and I. Heard Councilman Cook suggest that we get ahead of the curve and start looking at what we may do as a city, and then I heard the mayor. Expound a little more on that, and I like that idea to be more comprehensive and.
The only thing I would say about that, though, is this is all market-driven. Um, you know, and so it's it's really hard for us as a city to protect that, particularly long-term. You know, we don't know how many ATT, AT&T, Verizon users, where they're gonna be at. We can't probably predict the technology that's going to be out in the next three to five years. And so I think it would be very difficult for us as a city to say, okay, you know, this is, these are the areas we think these towers should be. And to Ms. Matthews' point, you know, we've got federal law that also kind of ties our hands. Um, clearly, the law is on the side of the telecommunications provider. So I think it's, it would put us in a very difficult position to try to predict what would be best for the future as far as locations.
I appreciate that assessment. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I think that's, study would tell us that as well, so if, I mean, I think they would probably come back with that assessment. But at least somebody else is telling us that, so. Um, so I've motioned by Prester, seconded by Casey to delay fourteen B to March twenty-first meeting. And lots of discussion take place in between then. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen, Resolutions, fifteen A, Resolution Number two zero two-three dash zero four, Request to Approve the Redevelopment Plan for Lot Two. Here and There Edition, Applicant Here, There and Everywhere LLC, General Location, twenty-three oh six Lincoln Road. And I will open up fifteen A for public hearing. Um, is the applicant here just for any questions? So anybody wanting to speak regarding fifteen A, please come forward. Anybody for fifteen A, please come forward. Any questions for the applicant? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Robbie Ryan, one four zero zero six Charles, six eight one five four. Representing here, there and everywhere.
I, I, do you have anything like, as far as a diagram or what you're gonna build there? I I know that there was something attached. To our agenda, but you have more of anything that's more maybe ground level? And I, what I want to ask is where's the fifteen garages? And then I think there's probably. Um. I know that you said that it looks like there's some outlying outside parking on the north side.
Right. So there's forty-one parking spaces. That is basically one parking space for every bedroom. Do you have the garages? Well, what better units are above the garage and then the other additional spots on the north side of the property?
I I don't understand where the, you might have to point it out for me. You talk about over and under buildings. Which I've never heard of. Uh, and then. If I, if I'm understanding, looking at, you're right, the only vehicle traffic is coming in where those outside. Parking spots are. So if I lived in the southwest corner, I'd be parking on the north side, walking. Through the complex to the southeast corner, or am I wrong?
No, you're correct.
Which buildings are having the fifteen garages? I I I truly don't.
The buildings facing north.
So the the two, two on the left, two on the right, and the one in the middle?
You can point on the, on the shelf there.
Yeah. So those are the one-bedroom units above the, above the garages right there.
Okay, so there's gonna be five one-bedrooms with three garages in each building of those five buildings.
How many do we have in the garage, Tom? I think there's fifteen totally.
So there'd be three in each one?
Okay, what are the three? Oh, I see. Okay, those, okay, I see. You got three carriage houses and each of them will have.
So the over, over, under, I'm from Chicago, so it's, it's, it's a two-flat. It's basically a vertical duplex.
Okay.
One unit under, one unit over.
Oh, we call that a first-level site. I'm just kidding. I just didn't know what a over, under was.
I'll sign it. I'll sign in here real quick. My name's Brian Moffett. I'm a part of the development team. Fifty-seven zero one South one hundred and sixty-sixth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three five. Available to answer any questions you might have. The units that, um, Mr. Ryan is describing are carriage house units, so they are designed with residential units above garages.
Okay.
So we have five one-bedroom units that there is one bedroom per building. Five, I believe there's five garages or. Let's see, there's total of fifteen. Well, there's forty-one parking stalls along the, along the north side, but fifteen, I believe, total parking, garages. With carriage house units.
How many park, outside parking are there?
I think we have forty-one total units that match the bedroom count. Right?
The total parking should be forty-one.
Forty-one stalls, forty-one stalls per, forty-one bedrooms, forty-one parking spaces. Some in the garage, some on the north side.
Okay.
And the parking is, um, situated. By design, the surface stalls to the north side, as you referenced, the units, um, to the southwest corner of that site. Um, in the missing middle, uh, design, it's set up that way to encourage, um, people to interact.
I was looking more for just the space. I'm looking at, if I understand what the three carriage houses are. Um, if they got garages on them, can I, I'm gonna park a car in my garage. I gotta, that's my fancy car. Now I want to park one in front of my garage. Is there space that I can then? Can I park in front of my garage?
No, no.
Okay.
One thing I would point out is this property zone, BGM, Metropolitan General Business. Um, BGM is unique to the Old Town area, um, and it does not have a minimum requirement for parking stalls. So, um, again, burden is on the developer, um. To provide what they believe will be adequate, but this is, this is the only zoning district which does not have a minimum parking requirement.
Well, I, I guess my concern was forty-one bedrooms. Forty-one parking stalls.
I saw Mr. Casey giving me a look, so I I just wanted to point out that, yeah, I mean, typically.
I have a birthday party and I want to invite ten friends, now tell me where they're gonna park.
Right. Typically, we would require, um, two stalls per dwelling unit on like a multifamily project. But again, in the BGM zoning district, there is, it's unique that there is no minimum parking requirement per the zoning ordinance.
And we just had several inches of snow and we have to stack it somewhere and that might take a parking stall or two. All right, I just. I didn't know that the zoning allowed, and I, cause I'm thinking in my mind, we're not, we're not even close. In Chicago, I've been there and you guys, you guys go up and have millions of people there.
Yeah, I don't think Bellevue's ready for no, no parking.
I'm just looking at that thinking, okay, we got a stall for every car and I can't have a second car or. You know, load my, if I load my dry garage up with. Whatever and don't park there, I don't know where I'm gonna put my car. So, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryan? Thank you. Thank you. Uh, public hearing, there is no public hearing. Yeah, there is. It's open. Anybody else want to speak regarding fifteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any, oh, to have motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve fifteen. A.
I'll second it.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions?
And maybe I should have asked Robbie this question, but, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask you, these are gonna be, um, not rental units, they're gonna be, um, residential sales. Is that correct on this?
These are rentals.
These are all rentals. Sorry, Robbie, I should have asked you that earlier. And then, um. What are the, any idea what they're gonna rent for?
So that was our concern, uh, you know, for this area, um, the missing middle, so eighty to hundred and twenty of the AMI. So that'll range from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for two bedrooms. And that fits within that eighties to hundred and twenty, um, of the average median income.
And what's the square footage on these ballpark?
Six fifty and nine sixty-five, I think.
So six fifty for the one bedroom and nine something for the two bedroom?
Yes, two bedroom, two baths.
And then do they have two parking stalls on the two-bedroom, two baths?
Yeah, we have one per bedroom.
One per bedroom, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Cook?
I I'm just gonna ask you, is, is, I don't know, I know there's apartments north of there, but what would you do? If five people fill their garages up with garbage, what are we gonna do with excess vehicles?
I'm gonna call the mayor's hotline.
We're not gonna get involved on private property. I, you know, and I, I, listen, I think this looks neat and and. We're seeing a lot of new things, even down, I don't know if you're from here, I think you said Chicago?
Yeah, I've been here ten years.
We're, our old town, we're trying, we're getting some development things going down there that are neat and.
Yep.
And we got one thing by our Washington Park, you know, just. Parking's gonna be an issue there probably someday too, but it's stuff that we're, we're getting some sort of neat development. That maybe we really haven't seen before. And we definitely haven't seen it, you know, sitting on our main Old Town Street called Mission Avenue, which I think is neat. And I hope that everything works and everything, and everybody's successful in their ventures, but.
Parking, I mean, parking's an issue. I mean, parking is gonna be an issue on the redevelopment, you know, on Mission, you know? I mean, the diagonal parking will help. But I think there's some things that need to be done to be able to park all that when the apartments come and the retail comes, so. Yeah, parking is always the challenge, cause nobody wants to pay for it.
So I assume you're gonna assign one stall for each bedroom, basically. Okay. All right, that's what they have to live with on their lease then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, is this, this the same property that had mobile home zoning, isn't it?
Correct. Yep, it was, uh, rezoned about a year ago to the BGM.
So that was a good thing. All right, um, motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen A, uh, current business, sixteen A, approve and prove the environmental review record and the HUD form seventy fifteen dot fifteen. Request for release of funds and certification and authorize the mayor to sign and submit to HUD. A motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item sixteen A.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Prester. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, approve the thirteenth extension to the contract with Justin Toms for custom farming. Approximately thirty-six acres at thirty-six and Capeport Road in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. And the thirteenth extension to the contract with Justin Toms for custom farming, approximately sixty-two acres. custom farming approximately sixty-two acres near the Bellevue Sports Complex, an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. And to waive council policy for requiring solicitation of bids on goods and services costing more than thirty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Pre- Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to approve item sixteen B as just read by you.
Second.
Motion by Prester, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C was removed. Sixteen D, approve the purchase of a vehicle for the police department to replace a marked cruiser totaled in a crash in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen, where'd it go? Sixteen D.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number Four with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for storm drainage projects in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Councilwoman, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Professional Engineering Service Agreement, Amendment Number One for the Thirty-Sixth Street and Blind Avenue Traffic Signal Modifications, in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug, real quick, is, is this involve anything of a cost share with the federal government scene that's at Thirty-Sixth and Blind, or is this all on us?
Yes, this is to do with the Thirty-Sixth Street improvement, so we're in the process of getting everything lined up.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
More comments or questions? Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G was removed by the amended agenda. Sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign City of Bellevue, Nebraska Police Officer's Retirement Plan and Trust Restatement for certain police officers. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
I'll make the motion to approve item sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Prester. Questions? Comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. February report will be attached to March seventh meeting. Uh, no closed session, item eighteen, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Welch.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thanks, guys, you tucked it out.